Go ahead and open up our regular meeting. Could you please silence or shut off your cell phones? And please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, alright, so Melanie, do we have any additions or additions?
Yes, we have two additions. Um, the Fourth Amendment OHA Agreement number 166046 and Youth Mentor Contribution, no additions.
Alright, perfect. Um, so we have four hearings today on some additional ordinances that we will be amending and adopting. And that will be a timed item at ten fifteen. But right now, I'll open it up for public comment. If anyone has any public comment they'd like to give, um.
Just, I, I-
Yeah, that isn't, that isn't already on the agenda, sorry, go ahead.
I, I just want to make one public comment that I think is really important. I've gone through all the ORS about what the Board of Commissioners is supposed to do. And I know you, James, by reputation because I know and admire somebody that thinks the world of you. Went to school with Dawn, know the Mark, the Albertsons forever and ever. And I just want to remind you that the way government works, the people are sovereign, then come the Board of Commissioners who act as agents on our behalf. And the governor is not sovereign over any of this. She is answerable directly to you. That's the way the authority goes. Sort of like God instituted.
Um, I would like to say something, so it's on record. Um, it would really be lovely if these meetings could be in the afternoon or early evening because I'm pretty sure we'd have a lot more people here.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably very true. Any other public comment? Um, public comment will remain open for the, throughout the, uh, um, meeting. Just, just FYI, so if anyone has a question, please raise your hand. Well, because there are so many, uh, people here today, um, probably gonna limit, um, formal comment to about five minutes. So, per person. And just to make sure that we have, make sure everyone gets heard. You guys do have a lot of public comment. Um, with that, I'm gonna run down some of our agenda items real quick. Uh, personal property tax cancellation. Uh, this was something our assessor, Dave Knowles, brought us the other day. Um, Commissioner Albertson, are you able to, uh, hear everything alright?
Yes, I am.
Perfect, thank you. I'll entertain a motion on this.
Can I make the motion to approve the personal property tax cancellation of seventeen accounts, as presented?
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to approve the personal property tax cancellation of seventeen accounts dating back to nineteen ninety-two. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. It's different. The, um, next item on the agenda is Pacific Crest account change. The Treasury brought this to us the other day.
Like we talked about yesterday, uh, with interest rates kind of starting to move up a little bit again, I helped the county to take advantage of that. And it requires formal action by the board to, uh, make a motion in the minutes and then a formal letter to create a money marking account at Pacific Crest. And like we spoke about yesterday, it is the county's policy to have funds in every, uh, banking or credit union institution within our county borders. Uh, so this is just one of the main accounts that we have in the comment. But it gives us the opportunity to increase our interest earnings from dollars into cents.
Right, and this will increase our earnings from about point two percent to about point five.
No, it's actually point zero two.
Point zero two, sorry, point zero two.
Every little bit helps, so, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, perfect. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I make the motion to, uh, make the change at Pacific Crest Credit Union, moving our money market count to, from point zero two to point zero five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Alright, we'll get that letter signed and get that on. Thank you. Um. Next item is the publication of foreclosure list. And every year, we publish the accounts moving from delinquent to foreclosure. Um, I'll entertain a motion on this. This was brought to us by Dave Knowles, our assessor.
Okay, I'll make the motion to, uh, accept the foreclosure list and have it be posted as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, let's see here. Fourth Amendment to the OHA Agreement. What's up next?
I'll make the motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority twenty twenty-one intergovernmental agreement for the financing of mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention and problem gambling services agreement, number one six six zero four six, for the benefit to the county of six thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, the discussion's primarily for the board on this. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Did you have a comment?
Um, is this, um, Fourth Amendment in relation to, um, sixteen nine five one eight?
One six six zero four six.
Okay, but you've got a Second Amendment two to, um, Oregon Health Authority two oh one, two oh two one intergovernmental agreement for the financing of mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention and problem gambling agreements. And then the other one is for, um-
We only have one on here.
The financing of public health services. Are they all interrelated? Because this one is a memorandum of understanding, apparently, that you signed with Oregon, um, OHA.
We have a lot of these. Um, some of them have, are, get updated frequently.
Okay.
And some of them are standing from years prior. Um, we, we go through amending these constantly.
Okay.
Um, this was for an additional six thousand going to the aid and assist project.
Okay, so have, um, who is the public health authority for, um, the one that I have that Melanie sent me, which is sixteen nine five one eight zero?
That was last years ago. Yeah, Judy Clark is the Public Health Director.
Okay, um, my question is, it's a hundred and thirty-six pages long. Did you guys read it?
Yeah. They highlight what they change and, um, what they, what we amend.
Okay, because-
Yeah, that was the one that we didn't end up printing out. We just re- reviewed the digital copy.
Chair.
Yep.
Could them state their name? I can't see this.
Oh, Loma Wharton.
Thank you.
Um, if I may, I would like to make comment about these at the end of my presentation because it's all connected.
Okay, oh, it'll be five minutes limitation.
Five minutes, okay.
So, we still have a little bit of time. We're gonna still try and knock it, one more out. We have a youth mentor contribution. Um, we talked about this yesterday. Figure we put it up, we were thinking about maybe putting it on to the agenda in another few weeks. Um, I talked to Melanie last night and talked about trying to get it on the agenda today and just kind of move forward with it. Um, do you guys feel comfortable? I guess I, I entertain the, uh, um, a motion on maybe making that contribution today.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make the motion to approve five thousand dollars to go to the Lake County Youth Mentor Program.
Second.
Okay, um, motion been made and seconded. Uh, discussion, I wanted to, uh, bring up something I had a note on yesterday, actually. Uh, Jake, um, you and I spoke. Would you mind clarifying a little bit about what we talked about?
Sure. This, uh, was mentioned yesterday in the presentation that this is a grant to juvenile apartment. It's seen as that, however, it's past three dollars. I wanna say in two thousand fifteen, um, the Commission of Children and Families sunsetted, um, altogether. And, uh, the legislature at the time ruled that authority over to the juvenile apartments. Uh, so it's basically past three dollars. And it's, uh, it goes through the mentoring program, um, in a form of a grant, grant eight dollars from the Oregon, um, Education Department, excuse me, Oregon Department of Education. We're just, uh, vacant, here you go. Um, so it's not directly involved with the juvenile department or the county, other than past three dollars. Um, and, uh, that agreement predates, um, that to the current director, Daphne. Um, and that's, they do the work. Um, you ask the data, we enter the data and forward it on to the Department of Education. So it's not a direct grant with the county, it's past three dollars.
Okay, alright. Thank you, appreciate that clarification. Um, alright, I'll, uh, although, I'll take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. With that, it is, um, ten fifteen. I'm gonna go ahead and open up, uh, I think the hearings for ordinance twenty-seven, which is our proposed Lake County Outdoor Burn Ordinance, um, that we put together. Been a long time on that. And then, let's see here, we've also got ordinance one sixteen. Uh, we're making some amendments. This is on the, in the matter of an ordinance related to the prohibition and abatement of nuisances. We're also going to open another hearing for ordinance fifty-two point one two three. The draft in regards to planning, uh, permit fees. Also, an ord- on ordinance fifty-two point four zero two, uh, related to, uh, um, the building office and, uh, building permit fees. So, um, with that, uh, there can be public comment on any one of those ordinances at any time. Uh, if you have any concern on that ordinance, the hearings will be open, um, for those hearings at the end of today's meeting. And, uh, we will likely take action on those ordinances today as this is, uh, this is the third, I think, or second. Second, yeah. Yes, sir?
Uh, what is the ordinance that you're proposing on that, uh, for outdoor burning?
It is an, uh, ordinance, I don't have any other copies, I just have my copy. It's, uh, related to, uh, in the matter of regulating open fires and requiring a permit, uh, for those open fires, open burning fees and authorizing, uh, or, o- open burning and authorizing the Lake County Fire Defense Board, um, on, uh, the burn bans. So, during fire season. So once we declare-
During the fire season, that's what you're talking about, yeah, okay.
Fire season, it prohibits-
Yeah, I was wondering if this thing was gonna be year-round kind of deal?
No, it's during fire season primarily. And there are exceptions, um, as far as burn hurdles and such as well.
You can still, uh, get a permit.
Yes.
You can meet the, uh, different, uh, Mr. Chair.
Is Jim Bailey still county council?
Uh, sorry, that, say that again, right?
Is, is Jim Bailey still the county council?
I believe so, yes, yes, he is still our legal counsel.
Not A. Lee, but-
Yeah, no, Jim Bailey is still our county counsel. Is Jim Bailey on the line? He is on, okay. So I wasn't sure if Jim Bailey was actually on the phone or not, but, uh, I think he will be calling in sometime later. Um, with that, uh, we have our, we're pretty efficient. Our timed, next timed item is until ten thirty. Is there any other public comment on the ordinances primarily? Yes, sir?
A couple, I thought there was a county ordinance we were told a couple of years ago about RVs on your own property could only be occupied by whoever up to a time of seven days. I thought that was told to us on, um, at residences. But yet, up here, I live at Drew's Reservoir, where that people move in and live in campers for months at a time with no power hook up, no subways, no water.
The burning issue is a big issue with us.
With us, yesterday, their generator running every afternoon inside brush country. And there was a power saw running for about an hour yesterday somewhere around Drew's Reservoir camp net, or boat docks down there. And, and there's no, I mean, there's ordinance for property owners that have permits and pay property taxes, but it seems like there's no rules or laws against people just coming up, buying a piece of property and squatting on it. I go, how can we, how can that be enforced?
A lot of that comes down to just what you said, enforcement.
So, or, is there a way, a way to do it?
So do we call nine one one and say, someone's operating a hard power?
Our house is in danger, our property's in danger, that we're paying high property taxes on.
Somebody's using the barbecue without complaining.
Somebody's dumping their barbecue ashes out 'cause that's how they're cooking, they don't have power.
So, what we've done, um, as a board, and Commissioner Albertson actually has done a tremendous amount of work on this. Um, we have worked into our budget for this year and hopefully for many years to come, having an enforcement officer. Um, so that we can actually have a designated person to deal with a lot of these violations because currently, we don't have an enforcement officer other than the local police officers and, and they are inundated with a very high call volume that has done nothing but go up and throughout the years. So, it's, um, we've taken on as a challenge. Commissioner Albertson, if you'd like to speak on this a little bit, I, I see that you're unmuted.
Yeah, so, first of all, if people can please state their name for the record before they speak, um, that helps us out when we go back on many minutes to know who said what.
Uh, my name is Bert Wasser, my wife is Gail Wasser.
Bert, Gail, pleasure, thank you.
So Bert and Gail, we just posted the, um, nuisance, um, officer position this last week, and so we'll be holding interviews on people. Um, and so, there will be, there is a nuisance ordinance for, well, there's already, the burden, burn ordinance, you shouldn't be running a chainsaw. And so, um, on the second part of that is that people will be able to stay at, like, if they buy a piece of property, they won't be able to stay more than fourteen days once we get this done. If people are staying there and living there without sewer, water, or power, um, they won't be allowed to leave their RVs there. And so, um, what you'll do from now on is you'll call the, um, Building Department and get ahold of the nuisance officer or, or whoever answers the phone and say that you wanna place a nuisance. And you can do that right now and so we can get a step on it. So when you leave here, just go down to the planning office and tell them you wanna file a nuisance complaint. You'll need to have the address or at least-
That could be a problem.
Pardon me?
That could be a problem, they don't have address.
Well, you go, lock their off now. Show us on there.
We can show a lot.
I, I can't hear when you're over talking, so if you guys can wait until I'm done, I'd appreciate it. So if you, if they don't have an address on that, go to, uh, the planning department and show them on a map what lot they're in. The nuisance officer then will be dispatched out there. They'll take pictures and start the process. And that's how we work.
Uh, Judy Manny Otis, and I do have one comment on that 'cause I live right there. And I do everything in my power to do fire abatement around my place. Uh, what do we do in this terrible, dangerous situation until there is a nuisance, uh, officer? Because, uh, it, it is so tender drive that up there, my house would go in an instant with, with the people down below me to our dog lake. I mean, it would be gone because of all the fire fodder left over from the very point fire. Uh, we need something done immediately.
So, that, that goes for you also. Go down to the Building Department after you're done with the meeting and file a form or complaint on where your neighbor is that's got garbage or pipe, uh, grass, or brush, or whatever that you need taken care of and start the process.
What else is considered a nuisance?
Consider it, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim Miller, what is it considered a nuisance? You guys were talking about nuisances. Is it just for that sort of thing that Mr. Wasser, Wasser said? Or is it like animals? I mean, I guess I don't understand.
Well, I suppose you can go get a copy of the actual ordinance. It's not filed with the county right now. There's, I'm not gonna go through all the definitions, but there's, it's lengthy.
Okay.
They are also online, correct? Thank you.
Loma Wharton, um, for those property owners out there that are having issues with sagebrush and all the stuff growing around your own property, aren't there still Title II and III funds available for the homeowners to be able to apply for through the county so that they can clean and log up to a hundred and fifty feet around each building on their property?
Where do I answer that question? I'm not sure I have an answer on that.
County has, uh, Title II and Title III money.
I know that's what some of it is allocated for.
There's also been, uh, Senate Bill seven six two that just got passed right at the end of the session. Uh, that's going to be, uh, potentially making more, uh, dollars available to the public that will, uh, help out that, what you're exactly talking about.
Thank you.
May I make a comment to Commissioner Albertson?
Your name again, just again.
Ray Bledsoe.
Okay.
Commissioner Albertson, where are you in Alaska?
I'm in Holmer.
Holmer, been there many times. Big bear is held there.
Okay.
So are you fishing? I was fishing there, no, him, my brother.
That, that was your brother Hank, by the way, Mark.
Not today.
Alaska is not burning this year, is it?
No, it's actually been very wet and rainy, I wish it was, down at our end.
There are fires in that mosque that have been burning for a thousand years, you know.
Right, um, any other public comment?
On that subject, or can I do a new subject?
On the last subject you and Ray were talking about with the commissioner, no.
Who, who's talking now?
That was, that's your brother Hank, Mark.
Tell him to state his name.
Ray Bledsoe.
Don't be throwing Ray under the bus.
Uh, Hank Albertson. Uh, a, a number of times I have, uh, in regard to ORS twenty-eight, I think it's dot O three O, I'd have to make sure. But, uh, it requires state officers to answer your questions of law. And a number have refused. And I was wondering what it would take to get an awareness going that if the state officers or the county officers or the judges refuse to answer the questions pursuant to that, that they would lose their authority. Or if they lied to the people, which they've done. And a lot of the people are here today because they can't get answers. So I'd like to know the process of getting an ordinance started and making them obey their laws. And so, uh, if somebody could email that to me at Hank Albertson and got it, the procedure, then I would like to get something going.
Thank you. Any other public comment? On the ordinances on any of the four hearings that we have, I'll open the date. Um, it's pretty much ten thirty. Um, we do have one timed item on here. Um, Loma Wharton?
Get a chair. Should I just get a chair? Take the chair.
Jim? Good morning, Chris Harris. Good morning, Jim, how are you? I'm fine, how are you? Been okay. Good.
Can I start now?
Yes.
Okay, I am Loma Wharton. Um, so that the audience knows, before I get started, I handed the commissioners, um, a packet last week with seven different items in it. And I have them all posted up there on the board so that you can see them for yourself. And I'm here today because of what our courts tell us. If a party stands by and sees another dealing with property and a man is inconsistent with his rights and makes no objection, he cannot afterwards have relief. His silence permits or encourages others to part with their money or property and he cannot complain that his interests are affected. His silence is acquiescent and it stops him. So I'm here today, commissioners and for the audience, to report the crimes that Governor Brown has committed against the people of the, uh, excuse me, of Lake County. If you look up on her board, on the board up there, I have two resolutions that she wrote, actually executive orders. Executive Order twenty oh three was her very first order that this county against, uh, how old is I wanna say it, with our businesses. What she neglected to do, and let me remind everybody, Kate Brown is an attorney, she knows exactly what she's doing. She has violated House Bill three four five three that was written by the Oregon Legislature in two thousand and thirteen. And it relates directly to the governor's proclaiming fiscal emergencies within the state. Section one says that these public safety objectives are to be accomplished by creating cooperation among units of local government and granting the governor power to act on behalf- and granting the governor power to act on behalf of units of local government. The provisions of this section shall be liberally construed. Section two, if the governor, and pay attention here, the president and minority leader of the senate, the speaker and minority leader of the House of Representatives agree unanimously that a public safety fiscal emergency has occurred or is imminent, the governor may proclaim a public safety fiscal emergency. The only signatures on all of her executive orders is her name and Beth Clarino, the secretary. She didn't do it. So what I'm going to cite for you today, and I'm going to bullet point all the documents that I gave to you. The crimes being committed against the people of Lake County by Governor Brown, OHA and OSHA. Governor Brown is and has been operating outside of her oath of office under both the Oregon State and the United States Constitution and does not have the governing authority to shut down Lake County and mandate anything through an executive order not agreed to by the senate and the house. Governor Brown is in violation of the people-at-large's unlinkable rights. By her unconstitutional executive order, Governor Brown has violated her oath of office to protect and defend the Oregon Constitution and the United States Constitution, and as such has violated the following Oregon revised statutes. Oregon Revised Statute one, six, two, four, one, and five, official misconduct in the first degree. Number one, a public servant commits the crime of official misconduct in the first degree if with the intent to attain, obtain a benefit or harm another. Stealing our businesses' monies through OHA fines is how she's done it. And B, the public servant knowingly performs an act constituting an unauthorized exercise of official duties. Governor Brown, like I said, is an attorney. She knows better, or she should. And number two, the official misconduct in the first degree is a class A misdemeanor. Governor Brown has and is using Oregon Health Authority and the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, a federal agency, to violate the following U.S. codes. Title eighteen, Code two, four, one, conspiracy against our rights. Title eighteen, Code two, four, two, deprivation of our rights. Whoever under the color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom willfully subjects any person in any state the depre, the deprivations of any rights shall be fined under this title or in prison not more than one year or both. Title eighteen, Code two, four, five, federally protected activities, to name a few. The Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and no one has the right to violate the Constitution or our federal laws. Eighteen, Title eighteen, U.S. Code nineteen sixty-two, prohibited activities participating in amount of corruption. Eighteen, USC, ten thirty-one, major fraud. Eighteen, USC, Code ten thirty-eight, false information and hoaxes. This internet is full of doctors and scientists stating the truth that this COVID pandemic is a fraud. Title eighteen, Code thirteen forty-one, frauds and swindles, subversive threats, treason, and sedition. Title eighteen, USC, eight nine one, eight nine six, quoting section eight nine one. An exorbitant means is any means which involves use or an express or implicit threat of use of violence or other criminal means to cause harm to the person, reputation, or their property. Governor Brown is using OHA and OSHA through fines and levies to destroy the businesses of Lake County. Title forty-two, Code nineteen eighty-three, deprivation of rights. Every person who, under color of any statute, ordinance, regulation, custom, or usage of any state subjects or causes to be subjected, any person within the jurisdiction thereof to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured by the Constitution and laws shall be liable to the party injured in an action of law.
Mrs. Wharton, um, you have five minutes. It's past. Um, could we summarize quickly?
Kim Miller, I give her my five minutes. Title forty-two, U.S. Code nineteen eighty-five, conspiracy to interfere. If two or more persons in any state or territory conspire for the purpose of depriving either directly or indirectly any person's rights, the party so injured or deprived may have an action for recovery of damages against any one or more of the conspirator. This includes OHA and OSHA. The people and the businesses of Lake County have a God-given right to their own labor. House Bill three, oh, five, seven, which is also up on the board, violates this code as well. No warranty by a court of competent jurisdiction is required. That's in House Bill three, oh, five, seven. Title forty-two, Code three, six, one, seven, interference, coercion, or intimidation. And also take note of the following, commissioners. No one is above the law, not Governor Brown, not the Oregon Legislature. Under Title forty-two, nineteen eighty-six, they both, the Oregon Legislature and Governor Brown, have a duty to prevent a wrong from being done, and so does this commission. Title eighteen, USC, sixteen, twenty-one, citing the neglect to protect by individuals under oath. Sixteen, American Jurisprudence Second, Section ninety-eight. While an emergency cannot create power and no emergency justifies a violation of any of the provisions of the United States Constitution and the state's Constitution. No emergency has a just cause to suppress the Constitution or the people-at-large's unlinkable rights. From the Sixteenth American Jurisprudence Second Edition, Section one, seven, seven. The general misconception is that any stat, statute passed by legislators bearing the appearance of law constitutes the law of the land. House Bill three, oh, five, seven is void on its face. Governor Brown's mandates are not law. The Constitution, the Oregon Constitution, are the supreme law of the land, and any statute or mandate to be valid must be in agreement. It is impossible for both the Constitution and the law violating it to be valid. One must prevail. And if you look at, um, House Bill three, oh, five, seven, it totally and completely violates our due process rights because it does not require an, or, a warrant. It says that the public health director or a local public health administrator may issue an emergency administrative order causing a person or group of persons to be placed in isolation or quarantine if the public health director or the local public health administrator has probable cause to believe that a person or a group of persons require immediate detention in order to avoid a clear and imminent danger to others, and that considerations of safety do not allow initiation of the petition process set out in ORS four, three, three, one, two, three, which says, entry into a premises used for isolation or quarantine, assistance of law enforcement with no warrant. That's what it says. Governor Brown violated her authority by shutting down Lake County. This includes and is not limited to all schools, churches, and small businesses, nature centers, mandating sovereign, healthy people in Lake County to stay at home and issue a mask mandate. Governor Brown does not have the legal authority to create laws and mandates without the agreement of our legislature. Their signatures must still remain vacant on her mandates. Governor Brown is mandating masks, mandating masks as providing medical treatment without a medical license and is a hundred percent a violation of the law. Mandating medical treatment for healthy individuals who do not require treatments also against the law. Forcing medical treatment and ignoring the right to refuse medical treatment is against the law. Civil citations for fines on violation of mask mandates is unconstitutional and illegal as Oregon receives federal funding, and money cannot be made on fines for mandates that are not law. And by the way, where is all the federal money issued to Oregon from Congress for this so-called virus? Lying about the facts of illness to a patient, fabricating an illness that does not exist within the patient or giving them false treatment is against the law. But more importantly, Governor Brown cannot advise, implement treatment, or force anyone to abide by the specific doctor they are getting their information from because people get second opinions of diagnoses all the time. It's also a violation of the Constitutions and HIPAA to force anyone to publicly disclose their medical history or any kind, including forced vaccinations, for exemption purposes as it forces that patient to waive his doctor-patient confidentiality and their private person. Governor Brown is also guilty for violating the Logan Act. And I want everybody in this room to pay attention to what I'm about to say. The Logan Act is the United States federal law.
Excuse me, Mrs. Wharton, just real quick. Your second five minutes has expired unless someone else would like to do a five minute.
She can handle it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Logan Act is the United States federal law that forbids unauthorized citizens from negotiating with foreign governments. It was passed January of seventeen ninety-nine and last amended in nineteen ninety-four. The violation of the, violation of the Logan, Logan Act is a felony, and it is punishable under federal law with imprisonment of up to three years. The text of the act is broad and addresses any attempt of a U.S. citizen to conduct foreign relations without authority. In general, the act is intended to prohibit American citizens without authority from interfering in relations between the United States and foreign governments. Nothing in Section nine fifty-three of the Logan Act, however, would appear to restrict members of Congress from engaging in discussions with foreign officials in pursuance of their legislative duties under the Constitution. However, seeing that representatives of Congress are citizens, the court found it prudent to rule in United States versus Kirkright Corporation nineteen thirty-six. And Justice Sutherland wrote in a majority opinion the following. The president alone has the power to speak or listen as a representative of the nation. He makes treaties with the advice and consent of the senate, but he alone negotiates. Into the field of negotiation, the senate cannot intrude, and Congress itself is powerless to invade it. The president is the constitutional representative of the United States with regard to foreign nations. He manages our concerns with foreign nations and must necessarily be competent to determine when and how and upon what subjects negotiations may be urged with the greatest prospects of success. For his conduct, he's responsible to the Constitution. So commissioners, are any of you aware of the five oh C three nonprofit organization called Oregon China Council? Okay, did you know commissioners that this organization is being promoted by Governor Brown, Representative Dave Brock Smith and others in direct violation of the Logan Act? They have signed a memo of understanding with the Chinese General Chamber of Commerce in Fujian Province regarding the development of a modern agricultural complex in Fujian. Again, promoted by Governor Brown, Representative David Brock Smith and others, all violation, all in violation of the Logan Act. And if you go to the bottom of their webpage, you're going to find this statement. Oregon China Council endorses full implementation of the twenty thirty Agenda for Sustainable Development and its seventeen goals. In other words, and this is from all my years of research of Agenda twenty-one, Sustainable Development. And if you look at the board I have over there, and the long list to the right outside edge is how this twenty thirty agenda used to be twenty, twenty twenty agenda has, has and is being implemented by the organizations that this county, this county's officials, including this commission, pay dues to be a member of. These associations and their goals are for the complete removal of all private property rights in this country. And that's not going to happen as long as I exist. Commissioners, the people of this county, sovereigns in and of ourselves, by electing this commission, have a contract with you to protect our rights guaranteed by the Oregon and U.S. Constitutions. The Supreme Court has held that an express grant made by a sovereign may not be rescinded. A contract is a compact between two or more parties and is neither ex, excedatory or executed. Excedatory, an exceditory contract is one in which a party buys themselves to do or not to do a particular thing. A grant in its own nature amounts to an extinguishment of the right of the grantor and implies a contract not to reassert that right. We have a contract with you, this commission, to protect our rights. Insofar as we permit the sovereignty of our citizens and businesses in Lake County to be consumed by Governor Brown and her agencies, so too is our liberty through republican self-governance consumed. And the sacrifices of our forefathers and the birthright of our progeny is squandered. It is your duty, commissioners, to stop these egregious actions by Governor Brown and her minions by your oath of office. You are duty bound. Under Article one, Section eight of U.S. Constitution, states are prohibited from implementing foreign political initiatives through, through its prohibition of state by engaging in treaties and alliances of confederations. Governor Brown has committed treason against the people of Lake County in Oregon by creating an alliance with China, a communist government and American known enemy for years. Has Governor Brown given China more permission to bring their businesses to the free soil of Oregon and to offer up the labor of the free people of Oregon to support communist trade, businesses, and principles as Governor Kitzner gave? By staying engaged with Brown's conspiracy designed to abolish the political recognition of every sovereign individual's rights to their own labor and a right to earn a living in Lake County, this commission is in direct violation of your oath of office. You must take action to immediately sever all connections to Governor Brown and her agencies and immediately start the process of mitigating the damage caused by them. Insofar as the people of Lake County permit their sovereignty of our county to be consumed by Brown and her agencies, so too is our liberty through republican self-governance consumed. And the sacrifices of our forefathers and the birthright of our progeny is squandered. We are here today to demand that this commission duly elected by the people of Lake County, sovereigns if you will, over Governor Brown and the Oregon Legislature, OHA and OSHA, to stop this tyrannical abuse of unlawful executive orders because she has not done under her health, safety, and welfare to implement the resolution we shared with you to put the notice in the examiner, as we stated earlier in your documents, to sign it into a noted, into an ordinance with the enforcement and support of all the people to protect the people of Lake County from any more theft of their, of property and their damages. If you look at ORS one, seven, four, oh, three, oh, construction favoring a natural right to prevail, where a sta, where a statute is equally susceptible for two interpretations, one in favor of a natural right and the other against it, the former shall prevail. None of the terms defined in ORS one, seven, four, one, oh, eight, nine, to one, seven, four, one, one, eight, includes the Oregon Health Science University, the Oregon State Bar, any intergovernmental entity formed by a public body with another state or with a political subdivision of another state, or any intergovernmental entity formed by a public body with an agency of the federal government. This includes Occupational Safe and Healthy Administration, Health Administration, or the Oregon Health Authority. The strongest link in the chain of civil government is at the local level. Equality is paramount and mandatory by law. In Yiguo versus Hopkins, they said, the court said, "The fundamental right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness considered as individual possessions are secured by those maxima of constitutional law, which are the monuments showing the victorious progress of the race in securing to men blessings of civilization under the reign of just and equal law, so that the famous language in the Massachusetts Bill of Rights, the government of the Commonwealth, may be a government of laws and not of men. For the very idea that one man may be compelled to hold his life or the means of living or any material right essential to the enjoyment of life at the mere will of another to be intolerable in any country where even freedom prevails is the essence of slavery itself." Now, we wrote the, um, ordinance also over there on the law, on the, the board is, um.
Which ordinance is that?
It's count, ORS two, oh, three, oh, one, oh, the general powers and, uh, county polit, politics.
Have you copied those ordinances out?
Yes, it is. You have them.
Yep, I do.
Is to make all necessary contracts and to, to do all other necessary acts in relation to the property and concerns of the county.
Where are you reading? Which ORS is that?
ORS two, oh, three, point, oh, one, oh.
Okay, on subsection four.
Yes, sir. ORS two, oh, three, two, four, oh, organization powers and duties of the board. And under B, it says, unless provided otherwise by county charter or ordinance consists of three county commissioners, a majority of the board is required to transact county business. ORS two, oh, three, oh, six, five, violation of county ordinances. Two, the violator of the county ordinance may be prosecuted by the county in the name of the county or be made the defendant in civil proceeding by the county seeking redress. Oregon Revised Statute four, oh, one, three, oh, nine, the declaration of state of emergency by city or county procedures mandatory evacuations. The governing body of a city or county in this state may declare by an ordinance or a resolution a state of emergency exists within the county. The state of emergency does exist by these unlawful and illegal executive orders. And Mr. Albertson, since you believe that, um, this commission are agents of the state, I would like you to pay attention to what Continental Casualty Company versus the United States Circuit, Fifth Circuit nineteen forty declares and stated. Public officers are merely the agents of the public whose powers and authority are defined and limits, defined and limited by law. This document that I gave to you commissioners, I want you to pay attention to Mr. Albertson because sovereignty, it's called sovereignty versus the agents of the state. The theory of the American political system is that the ultimate sovereignty is in, is in the people from who all legitimate authority springs, and the people collectively acting through the medium of constitutions create such governmental agencies endowed with such powers and subject them to such limitations that, as in their wisdom, will be best promoted for the common good. Exactly why this commission was recre, was created. You commissioners work for us. Strictly speaking, our republican form of government. Strictly speaking, our republican form of government, the absolute sovereignty of the nation is in the people of the nation, and that's us here. The residuary sovereignty of each state, not granted to any of its public functionaries, is in the people of the state, UVA's dictionary. The people are supreme, not the state. See Warning versus the Mayor of Savannah. This county commission is supreme, not the governor nor the legislature. No legislature can bargain away the public health or the public morals. The people themselves cannot do it, much less their servants. New Orleans Gas Company versus Louisiana, like 1885. And none of these court cases that I'm citing to you, to my knowledge, have ever been overturned. "As men whose intentions require no concealment, generally employ the words which most directly and aptly express the ideas they intend to convey. The enlightened patriots who framed our Constitution and the people who adopted it must be understood to have employed the words in their natural sense and to have intended what they have said, Gibbons versus Ogden. He is not to substitute even his just or will for theirs; otherwise it would not be the common will which prevails, and to that extent the people would not govern." That was a speech by Judge Leonard Hand at the Mayflower Hotel, Washington, D.C., 1919. "The Congress cannot revoke the sovereign power of the people to override itself and thus declare." Perry versus United States, 1935. And if Congress can't do this, commissioners, neither can the governor or the legislature, and the power remains in the people through our health, safety, and welfare. In the United States, sovereignty resides in the people who act through organs established by the Constitution. Chisholm versus Georgia, Penn-Hollow versus Dome Administrators, McClintock versus Maryland, Yikwoe versus Hopkins, and those were all in 1886. "We, the people, do ordain and establish the Constitution for the United States of America," that is the U.S. preamble to the Constitution, 1789. "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to be denied or disparage others retained by the people." See Article 4, U.S. Constitution. "As men whose intentions require no concealment, generally employ the words which most directly and aptly express the ideas they intend to convey. The enlightened patriots who framed our Constitution and the people who adopted it must be understood to have employed the words in their natural sense and to have intended what they said." Gibbons versus Ogden. In Bond versus the United States, sent to Oregon to the State Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit, decided June 16, 2011. "The framers concluded that allocation of powers between the national government and the states enhance freedom, first by protecting the integrity of the government themselves, and second, by protecting the people from whom all government powers are derived." "State sovereignty is not an end of itself; rather, federalism secures to citizens the liberties that derive from the diffusion of sovereign powers." New York versus the United States, 1992. "If the constitutional structure of our government that protects the individual liberty is compromised, individuals who suffer, otherwise justiciable injury, may object." And that's exactly why we are here today for a redress of grievance. In Miranda versus Arizona, where rights secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rulemaking or legislation that would ever abolish them. House Bill 305.7 does just that. Norton versus Shelby County, "An unconstitutional act is not law and confers no rights; it imposes no duties, affords no protection, and it creates no office. It is in legal contemplation as an operative as though it had never been passed." So, we've also presented you with a resolution that you're required by law to have three public hearings on, held during your supervisor's meeting or special meeting, whichever you choose. Publishing the public hearing has to be done three times in the newspaper of record. It has to be posted for not more than 30 days before the meeting and not less than 10 days before the meeting. And I can read this resolution, or we can wait, and you can do it at a meeting, which would you like?
You created the resolution?
Me and some other people created the resolution. And let me tell you why I know that this resolution will work. I had the opportunity in 2012 to work with the Natural Resources Coordinator from Apache County, Arizona. Okay, Doyle Shandling was his name at that time. And they created... Excuse me? Two resolutions, and I'll hand them out here for you. I'll hand them out to you after I'm done. One of them was a resolution that declared an emergency in Apache County, Arizona due to the wall of fire, degraded forest conditions, imminent threat from catastrophic fires, and extreme drought.
I was on the wall of fire.
What's on the wall?
I was on the wall of fire.
Was you on the wall of fire? They also wrote another resolution declaring the exclusive authority of Apache County, Arizona, over certain roads, rights of way, and routes of travel within the boundaries of Apache County and located on certain lands also managed by the United States Forest Service or Bureau of Land Management. When they started this process, the environmentalists had a cow, but they couldn't stop it. They couldn't stop it because once they wrote this resolution and signed it, they became the lead agency. They called the meeting. Those that were invited didn't come, and didn't come had no standing. As the lead agency, the county determines the agenda and serves cohesion amongst the agency and is responsible for implementing the decisions. The county spent no money on this. The timber industry did it. The county made their money on taxes, fees, licenses, and permits. When they got started, and I worked with Doyle Shandling for a couple of years now, when they got started, Apache County had one mill, one ship, one without electricity. In 45 days, they had three mills up and running, three ships. Bodding Brothers out of Washington had a portable sawmill, and they had a pellet mill and a pallet mill. Okay? When they completed their process of cleaning and logging, that wall of fire, that's when the environmentalists got on board because the spotted owl came back. It also entitled them, as it would this county, to clean and log under your community wildfire protection plans 300 feet back on every road in this county, whether it's pavement or dirt, up to three and a half miles into the wildlife urban interface. Doyle Shandling also presented his solution to Congress's Natural Resources Committee, and they recommended this solution as a solution for all the western counties to take back control of our forests. It doesn't belong to the U.S. government. They are proprietors. Section 4, they don't have legislative jurisdiction, but seeing as how our legislature, when we first became a state, gave all of our land back to Congress instead of putting it to the vote of the people, this is where we stand. Okay? So, I'm gonna let you guys think on the resolution, but I do, how many of you here would like to hear the resolution?
I personally have some issues with the resolution.
Okay.
I don't think that it's adequate quite yet. I think there's a number of things that need to be corrected before I would even consider... I mean, for instance, off of notes that I had on the very last page, where it says, "Be it resolved, the Lake County Board Commissioners recognizes the citizenry of Lakeview City and County." Well, Lakeview is a city, it's a town.
That's true.
And as far as I know, it's not the county of Lakeview. It's the county of Lake. And if it is the county of Lakeview, maybe I should resign because I've lived in Summer Lake. So, those things need to be changed.
They can be changed if you want to read, to read at it. And what else concerns me? And we talked about these intergovernmental agreements with OHA. Now, the one that Melanie gave me, who is the public health authority that's been appointed for this, for Lake County?
The commissioners are officially the public health authority. Judy Clark is the public health director, and she is an employee of the health district.
Okay. So, if you read it, you know that the public health director is gonna be required to maintain and access to an isolation and quarantine location that is ready to be used, that facilitate, this person will facilitate efforts, including by partnering with OHA, CDOs, to link individuals needing isolation and quarantine support as such housing and food and so on. That's on page 11 of the 136-page memorandum of understanding. On page 12, this person that provides COVID-19 vaccination administration must submit vaccine orders, vaccine administration data, and VAERS report system information in accordance with federal and OHA guidance. Plan and implement vaccination activities with organizations, including but not limited to colleges, universities, occupational health settings for large employers, faith days for religious institutions, community health centers, pharmacies, long-term care facilities. When we begin to stop, commissioners, you know? And then on page 17, this administrator must include the following minimum TB services in it. This person will receive $3,500 for each new case of active TB disease. He will also receive $300 for each new B waiver follow-up. Is that for his own personal use, or is that gonna be used for something? On page 22, procedural operations and requirements by accepting and using the financial assistance awarded under this agreement for the program element, the LPA person agrees to conduct activities in accordance with the following requirements. Under B, this LPA agent will be reimbursed for pregnant female syphilis cases, $1,125; for female syphilis cases of reproductive age, $1,125; male early syphilis cases, $500. You know, it's agreement in the form of medications for treating STB/LPA. Maybe you may use those medications to treat individuals infected with or suspected of having reportable STDs. Is this LPA agent, is she a doctor?
No, she's overseen by a doctor. And those funds go to treat the spread and not for her personal benefit that you said earlier.
Okay. So, the financial assistance award is on page 94. Lake County, $198,264. Is that what you're gonna make on this memorandum of understanding?
No, we don't make that.
So, I'll interrupt you.
No, don't worry.
To answer your question, so when they do quarterly reports and then they reimburse, are reimbursed from OHA?
For what?
The metrics that you're talking about, different cases, different scenarios. They provide the service, and when they're reimbursed, up to them.
Okay, so you're talking state support for public health, public health emergency preparedness and response, tobacco prevention and education program, alcohol drug prevention education program. WIC, Peritoneal General Fund, General Funds title, general funds titled X or X?
I don't have that particular agreement in front of me, so I can't go down the itemized list of what issues you have with the actual agreement.
Okay, so what is the subcontractor? That's what I wanna know. This person shall comply and require all subcontractors to comply with federal laws?
Lake Health District is the entity that we contract with and provide the public services.
Why isn't it that mentioned in this agreement then?
Because it goes through the county. Because the county remains to be the public health authority.
Then please tell me what the Clean Air and Clean Water and EPA regulations have to do with health in Lake County?
Actually, they have quite a bit to do with health. Everybody has the right to breathe clean air.
Okay. So, you're also going to provide the EPA with a list of violating facilities. Violations shall be reported to OHA, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, and the Environmental Protection Agency. The only issue I have here is Article 1, Section 8, Clause 17 describes in detail where federal authority is. It's for ports, magazines, arsenals, dockyards, and other vehicle buildings. They have no business in our health here. That's a state issue.
So, real quick, Mrs. Wharton, I hate to bring this up again, but you are once again at the end of the, well over the 20 minutes. So, if someone had some more time, I think you already gave...
No, I've only got five minutes.
Okay, so I got another five minutes here.
No, he'd like to speak.
Oh, you'd like to speak?
No, Ray would like to.
Oh, Ray would like to speak, yeah. Ray, do you have a... Because I have only five more minutes for you from this one person. Ray, go ahead if you have something to say.
I would like to take the stand and speak for about five minutes.
Okay, well, as soon as...
It won't take five minutes.
Okay, all right, hang on one second then. While you're up here, you wanted to give your five minutes, ma'am?
Me?
No, no, you wanted to give your five minutes? All right, I'll give you five more minutes if you could summarize.
What I'm concerned about is, and this is because you represent us, the next time you did a 136-page memorandum of understanding that you're gonna agree to Oregon Health Authority, you need to let the public know about it.
There was public notice, and I don't remember exactly what was amended in that. I believe it was really small. I'd have to go back and look at my notes. But it's a big giant document, and they amended probably a page or two. And probably adjusted the amount of money that was coming into the same projects.
Sometimes it's just moved from one account to another.
Yeah, and sometimes they just cancel out an account and move the money over.
Well, if you'd like to make some additions or deletions, I would like to share this with you so that it can be done to protect people of this county. Because you have all the evidence you need. Her executive orders are void on this case. She didn't have the agreement with the House and Senate. Those are our laws. She violated them. She'll need to protect us because of it. Questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'll make sure you get copies of these before I leave so that you have them from Apache County, Arizona. And by the way, once Apache County, Arizona did this, four counties around them did the same thing, and several other counties throughout the state. And I contacted the Natural Resources Coordinator for Apache County again in 2009, and they are still cleaning and logging their community wildfire protection plans and they take back jurisdiction. Where's our right there for it? Their wars in there. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. And just on the record, my offer still stands, Mrs. Wharton, that you're more than welcome to call or come visit me at any point in time.
Okay.
May I just make a short comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Kim Miller, you need to kind of read your audience here in the county because this is what we want. We don't, it's just gonna shut us down again. If we can guarantee it, and we do not want that, we cannot survive that, we still aren't surviving that. We have jobs, but nobody's taking us. I mean, that's all I wanted to say.
So, Ray, I believe you wanted to come up with some public comment?
I do.
Do you need help?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Wharton.
Thank you.
With the law, and I agree with her. We need to do things around every socialist liberal governor there is, but I fought three wars for 50 states. And we won all the battles, and the politicians lost the war force. But I'm concerned about 50 states that I fought for. Oregon being more often. And every, I fought these wars so that... And Mark Alderson, I mean, and I mean that, they fought one. and I mean that they fought one war at least in Vietnam for the same reason. And that was to keep dictators out of the United States. And we've had so many pandemics in the past that we survived. And this is not a false pandemic. This COVID nineteen is, I received two shots from that one. And, uh, and, and, and my, my concern is that this is about the other fifty states that I see. And we have Democrats and we have Republicans governing. And let me tell you, all the, all the socialist Democrats and I agree with the lady on that often recalled from office to include the President of the United States, which he happens to be a distant cousin. So he won my. But I'm one. The lady to understand it wasn't just Oregon, it was fifty states that took. Democrats and Republicans became dictators. And it's the first sign of this damn pandemic, which is not a false pandemic. It's, it's killed several million worldwide. I thought it was false in person. And I believe that's about all I wanted to say. And they should start with the President on the panel. And recall.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
I would like to have.
Yes, Judy.
I would never sit down and post you this.
My name is Judy Maniades and I'm old. And so I, I remember the history of a lot of the things in this county. My, my grandfather came here in eighteen fifty-eight. So I compete with the Albertsons as far as longevity. As I grew up and as an adult, I have seen the state take over more and more and the guise of taking our money and then so generously giving it back with conditions. Beware of anything that the government gives you, because there are going to be strings attached. In the sixties, there was a consolidation of schools. Lake County used to be the richest school district, countywide school district in the state of Oregon.
Totally.
Until we gave our property tax money over to the state to give back to us to support our schools. Governor Brown threatened to, uh, shut down the prison. She was never going to shut down the prison, because after all, it was the only green energy prison in the state of Oregon. Would her environmentalists have allowed her to do that? I don't think so. But she used it as a wedge to get more agreement from you guys by giving it back to us. You know, how magnanimous. I just want to, all of you guys came from pioneers here that, that fought for this land and, and to give over concessions to the government. It, it, it's going the wrong way. I know at least two of you are Christians. God gave the authority down. Well, the, our, our country gave the authority up from the people to the governance, to a higher governance, to a higher governance. You guys are our first line of defense for the people.
That's right.
And so please, please let, please hear us. And don't allow yourselves to be bribed by this corruption that is in Salem, that is there because of mail-in ballots. Basically, that's why they're there. We have had, since ninety-one, we have not had a Republican governance in the state of Oregon. And that's when mail-in ballots were instituted.
Yep.
That's all.
Well, um, Mr. Bailey, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any comments? Any?
Uh, well, just from a legal perspective, uh, the presentation has presented numerous legal arguments regarding possible state and federal violations of state and federal law. And the, uh, the Board of Commissioners is the wrong forum for determining the legitimacy of those arguments. Where the judge would decide whether or not the violation that actually occurred. The, uh, the second thing is the request for a resolution. Just so we're all clear about it, a resolution doesn't change anything. It's simply a statement of
You made it into two statements.
By the board. So it wouldn't make any difference if we did it. Then the last thing is, there are several statements in the proposed resolution that would require some documentation or revision. And so I would say at this point, I think the proposed resolution is premature. It would have to be evaluated for, uh, I think with documentation, some contention.
It's the enforcement side of the resolution. May I retort, please?
Uh, well, you have.
It'll be very short.
You have given your five minutes now.
Well, this will take two seconds.
All right.
Okay, but I already heard that the issue here is lawsuits. You're, you're all afraid we're going to get sued. She has broken the law. There, why are we afraid? I don't understand it. Maybe you should speak to the Douglas County attorney, because they figured it out. We need to figure it out. Thank you. Kim Miller. And that's why there's the enforcement arm of the resolution at the bottom, so that the sheriff can enforce it.
One time, one question for your attorney. Ask him if he is an agent of foreign principles and whether he's registered as such. And ask him if he has any authority outside of this state and on the land of the Union State of Oregon.
Mr. Bailey, did you hear the question?
I don't really understand the question. My role is to advise the county Board of Commissioners on legal issues.
Okay.
British accredited registering.
So.
Yes, go up to the microphone, Hank. Ask it again. Go up to the microphone.
He's not entirely sure what you're.
Okay, I can't hear, I can't hear, but.
Okay, so he, I don't think Mr. Bailey fully understood your question.
Microphone.
His role here is to advise us on legal matters pertaining to county.
Is he your county council?
Yes, this is Jim Bailey, our, our county council, is on the line.
Yes. All of our attorneys are agents of foreign principles.
Yep.
And they have not registered as such. They have no authority on the land of the Union State of Oregon. They have authority in this state, which ORS one thirty-one dot one oh five, I believe, says is the fictional land and water above the real land and water. They have no authority. They refuse to deny otherwise. You can comment about that and provide documentation if I'm in error.
Okay.
Thank you, Hank.
Mr. Bailey, did you hear that?
Yeah, I did.
Um, is there any comment from my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Mark Albertson, you've been quiet for a while. Want to make sure that I'm able to give you time to jump in.
Well, everyone knows how I stand and how I feel about the governor. I guess that's all I'm going to say.
Is there any additional public comment? I know there's a number of people that haven't spoken today.
I would like for you folks to look into what she talked about, the fire. The county's taken over some responsibility as far as the fire going on. I mean, in the last few years, we managed to burn down half of this county. Or half the Fremont National Forest. Over the last seven years, we probably burned two-thirds. And it doesn't seem to be doing a whole lot of good. So I would really like to see the county get involved in that. I've talked to you all before. I am seriously irritated, I guess is word. I don't feel that the state and the feds have the authority to do half of what they're doing. I mean indiscriminately lighting off private land for whatever reason, I don't agree with. So anyway, I would once again encourage the commissioners to at least look into that problem. Thank you. My name is Jim Baldwin.
You can sit down and write a brief thing in there.
And so I would like to speak on that. I was on a phone call with Congressman Vince this morning for close to an hour, and he's going to speak on the floor tomorrow about that. And about forest health and these giant fires and all the threat that we've been dealing with for years. And so I would watch that tomorrow when he's on the floor.
Was that going to be tomorrow, Mark, or was that today? Uh, when I spoke to the congressman yesterday, it sounded like it was going to be today.
Well, you know how my hearing is? I thought, I thought he said he was doing it tomorrow. They were having votes today. Um, and so he told me, um, it was tomorrow, but all the texts, Nick, is, uh,
I believe it's today.
You think it's today?
Yeah. Congressman Vince talked to me as well.
Yeah.
It's a difficult, uh, deal to deal with wildfire. It's accumulation of many things. I can tell you that the governor is not influencing our fire at all. Period. So you, she made a press conference yesterday. She is full supportive of future protection around private property, like you're saying, cleaning up your private lands and having that defensible space, things like that. So she's going to be pushing dollars to have that potentially available for folks and whatnot in the future. But I, you know, I don't speak for her, but I know that she has zero influence on this one. She has not asked for influence. She's not asked to take over any of these property. She's not done anything. And that is for the Bootleg Fire, the Brat Fire, for the Watson Creek Fire, and all the other fires in the past.
The issue is not cleaning up our properties. The issue is cleaning up US Forest Service property.
Which is, which is actually owned by, owned by taxpayers, but it's mismanaged by the Forest Service. Light private property on backfires instead of suppressing fires is the biggest waste of tax dollars you've ever seen.
And the forests need to be cleaned up.
Mismanaged.
Hang, hang on one, one last minute, Miss Wharton. Um, just on that note, you know, one of the things, I'm just going to speak for myself on this, is one of the things that we've seen on this fire is that a lot of the fuel treatments that the Forest Service has done in the past, a lot of them didn't work, and a lot of the flames laid down, they were able to start getting ahead on things. And so those fuel treatments that the Forest Service has been working on and been able to do in the past have worked tremendously. So, you know, they, a lot of our local guys, or at least the people that work for the Forest Service here locally, they are our local residents as well. They're in the woods on the ground, they're seeing these things, they understand it. I think a lot of times their hands are tied by policy that is made back in DC. And I think that we all, we all understand that, we see that. But, um, and I think, you know, one of the things that I think we've all been talking about as commissioners is the fuel treatments. You know, we'd like to see more of them. And, and I think there's logic behind what you're saying as far as putting dollars more towards fire prevention rather than fire suppression.
Yes.
So, I do have one question back here at all. Go ahead.
Um, would it help you if I were to be able to provide you with documents from the General Accounting Services that shows exactly what the jurisdiction is of the federal government? In order for them to have legislative jurisdiction or to own our land, title has to have been issued. It had to be ceded. The natural process is that the governor recommends a piece of property. It goes to the United States Attorney General to be qualified under Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen. Money passes hands, title's issued. The only forest that's ever been done in this state is Crater Lake, and I've researched the archives to prove that myself. They have one of four jurisdictions, and I think that would probably help you. So I'm going to bring those documents to you see, to see, so that you can see how much forest they have taken from us and have control over right now, that we need to take back.
Okay. And, and again, you are more than welcome to come visit me at any time.
Okay.
My door is always open.
All right. I'll do that. I promise.
You're sorry.
You guys, so this is the only time I get to see it, so.
Okay.
Yes, you have to, and always have a good conversation. Um,
Eric?
Any addition?
Uh.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I just got a text from Nick Strager, the Chief of Staff, from the Congresswoman. He said tomorrow morning at some point, he'll be on the floor. He'll send me the time. Um, I can post it on Facebook when I get that time, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Yeah, I, I know what you're coming with it right now with wildfires, and we appreciate you coming to meetings.
I, I think you guys did a good job maintaining your cool up there and letting Oregon out.
Well, I'll tell you, if we had this much public input at all of our meetings, or even half of this, I'd be a lot happier. But as it stands, for the majority of our meetings, no public typically show up, so.
It's because you have them at ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
We would love to come.
Provide the videos you did the last time I was here.
No.
Stop going there, Jim. No.
No, we talked about the national forest land they're taking. My concern is the private land that they're taking with these fires.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm sorry, but that's where I, that would, that would, I hate to see them burning up the national forest land. But I really don't like seeing them burning up private land. Ammon served prison time for supposedly lighting the fire.
So can you state your name again, just because I remember Commissioner Albertson, he cannot see any of you.
Bert Wasser, Jim. And during the Berry Point Fire, we live at Drews, there's a Forest Service road within two hundred yards behind my property, and we were on level three evacuation.
Couldn't get out.
And while I was evacuating, guys came in with drip cans to light my property on fire and build fire trail crews. And they, I mean, two hundred yards up the hill, they could have did it from, on federal land, but they burned all the private land right in my area. And I would let them light there because I, I wasn't going to leave. So they had to move over the lot adjacent to me to light it up.
But they didn't move up to Forest Service.
But they did not move to the federal land. They stayed on the private land and lit it. And there were no reason for that.
I, I can't comment on that.
So, so that's my point about mismanaged Forest Service firefight tactics. I mean, they want to suppress the fire.
Well, again, I can't comment on that, and I don't know if any of us really should. We don't know the topography, we don't know the issues.
He just wanted. He just wanted to talk.
I understand. I know. So.
So my point is, when you're watching the news, you see the guy walking around with drip cans and an igniter. I hope they're on federal land, not on private land. They do not have the right to destroy our property. Or they think they do.
All right, so, um, any additional public comment? Okay. Um, is there? Um, is there any public comment on the four hearings and ordinances that we have opened today? And again, that's, we have the county burn ordinance, the matter of, uh, abatement of nuisances. We have our building department and planning department. Any, any comments? All right. Um, with that, I'm, I'm going to go through the process of closing out just the four hearings we have opened today. Um, Ordinance 27, I'll go ahead and close that, the hearing for Ordinance 27. Ordinance 116, Ordinance 52.123.
Excuse me?
And Ordinance 52.402. Um, now these were, we have action consideration on these today. We have to close the hearings and then we can act on them. So, uh, Mr. Bailey, um.
Yes.
And, and actually Melanie, have we, have we had all the hearings required for these then, like today? Okay. So we can go ahead and act on these today and put these into motion. Commissioner Alberton, Commissioner Schulenberger, I will entertain a motion on Ordinance 27 related to county, uh, burn ordinance.
I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 27, the county burn ordinance as it is written. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, discussion really quick. We did have some discussion at the last hearing. Um, so on subs, on section two, we're just going to move that the way you and I, you had kind of worked on with some of the other departments and just.
And that had to do with Department of State land.
Yes, and I left that out. So, uh, as far as public lands.
So BLM has, Bureau of Land Management has an MOU with DSL to protect DSL lands.
Okay.
It's our land.
Yes. I didn't know if you'd had a chance to meet with us in the hearing. So, all right, so as it reads, the ordinance shall apply throughout the unincorporated areas of Lake County, including county and private properties. It does not, however, apply to federal and state lands. Um, or state managed lands.
Can I just, I have authority over that.
So. Um, with that, I'll take a vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, so Ordinance 27 is approved. I'll move on. I'll entertain a motion on Ordinance 116 in the matter of an ordinance related to the prohibition and abatement of nuisances.
I'll make a motion to accept Ordinance 116.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
How about a question?
Discussion's primarily for us. I'm not, Mr. Bailey, can we take questions from the public during? You just said. Yeah, yeah, but especially if it's on this, I mean, our, our hearing's closed, so I'm not sure we can do that.
Yeah, you've actually closed a public hearing.
Yeah. If offline, we can definitely do that. Um, all right, so any discussion from the board? Mark? All right, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Um, next up is Ordinance 52.123 draft. Uh, planning and permit fees and through the planning department. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept Ordinance 52.123 as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, Ordinance 52.402 related to, uh, the building office, um, and the building permit fees. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept Ordinance number 52.402.
Motion on the table. Is it seconded?
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to approve Ordinance 52.402. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have, uh, meeting nets or anything from the prior meetings? Okay. All right. Uh, with that, the time being 11:36. I will adjourn the regular session of the Board of Commissioners Lake County. Thank you.
Those of you that are here, if you want to, me to stay up with you.